Doing these four to eight hour shifts. The chief planner, Mary Lynn and I were over there over the weekend dealing with the operational aspect of. Really paid off because Monday we are meeting with the Department of Toxic Substances. They will be coming in and doing their initial assessments in Redwood Valley. We'll be handing off a lot of the data that we compiled in the field. And they will begin their initial assessments of Redwood Valley and then they'll more than likely move over to Potter Valley, so we'll be meeting with them on Monday. So both Mary Lynn and I have been just swamped with meetings with state, local folks in trying to deal with now the recovery effort. This effort is going to be a multi-year effort and as I've said to staff, our work now really begins, especially with the recovery effort. With that said, planning and building has been tasked with doing coordinations with the, I'll say, the cleanup effort agencies. Last week I could have said it's CAL recycle for sure. We don't know that yet. We'll know more in the coming days which state agency or federal agency will actually be doing the cleanup. But right now what needs to be done is the assessments for toxic substances. We have pushed that information to the public that basically says, leave it alone. Don't go through, don't start removing debris. Don't start removing burned items. People are still able to go through the debris and sift through the debris for their personal items and so on, but the message is leave what's there. Don't remove it offsite because we know that people will have access to heavy equipment and they'll want to start cleaning it up. We don't want them doing that. Again, it is better to have the state or the feds do the cleanup so that it's not a direct cost to the property owner because these are toxic substances.
Do you think that whichever agency it winds up being will assign enough personnel and equipment to do this in a fairly timely way? I worry about the winter rains and things like that.
That's what we're hoping for because part of our discussions are going to be where do we begin? And the Board of Supervisors talked about looking at those areas that would impact the streams or would impact the, those areas that could have impacts on fisheries and wildlife and so on. So again, we'll have those discussions with DTSC on Monday and hopefully between us and them and the other agencies will be able to come up with a plan, what areas to start with first. We've been asked to coordinate with them for staging areas and doing the initial assessments. And again, we'll probably know more on Monday. The department is also sending staff to the LAC Center, the LAC Center up at the Mendocino College to try to answer as many questions as possible. What we're doing is we're in coordination with environmental health, taking names, contacts, information, telephone numbers, because there's a lot of unanswered questions yet as to who's going to clean up, when is it going to start and so on. Because it is a moving target, we don't know that information just yet and like I said, it's changing daily and hourly. And we will take their contact information and get back to them as soon as possible. I don't know if there's anything you want to add? No. So that's what we're tasked with and again, there's a lot going on in our department right now. Also sadly to say, I have one planner that has resigned and his last day is tomorrow. That's Robert Dostilek. He is leaving and going to the Bay Area. So yet the South takes our planners from us. Let's see. I believe that would be it for that, other than like I said, we're heavily involved in a lot of the recovery now.
Thank you. Any questions for the director?
Oh, I do have one more. One of the things that we're doing is we're going to, and forgot to mention, this is part of recovery, is we are working on an urgency ordinance in conjunction with county council that will provide for a relaxation of standards for the temporary occupancy of travel trailers or RVs on property while constructing. Right now, the ordinance basically is tied to getting a building permit before you occupy the structure. What we're looking at doing is changing the ordinance so that you can obtain an administrative permit, put an RV on the property for up to three years so that people have that time to obtain the building permit and then start constructing. The idea is to try to get people onto their own properties. And so there's a lot of rules and regulations that we're trying to work with right now, but that is the best way to deal with this is to try to get people back onto their own properties.
Especially given our housing situation.
Yes.
Questions? Nash, will that just be in regard to the current fire or will that be with any fires that have occurred in the past?
This would be tied to the Redwood Complex fire. Again, it's, the idea is tie it to these, to this particular fire, this incident, so that it doesn't get out of control and so we don't end up with nuisances in the county.
Okay. So nuisances that are currently there where fires, and I'm sure you know the property I'm talking about, we've met about this before. Will that be addressed? I know you're very, very busy right now, but it's been about three years that a fire has taken place in an RV and now two RVs are sitting on the property and there's a mess all over and it doesn't seem to be addressed.
Yeah, that's a code enforcement issue and they're going to be, they're dealing with that. Again, part of what's, and at one point I'm going to bring in Trent Taylor, who's the manager of code enforcement, to talk about the new processes that are being launched in the department in conjunction with county council. When I was here last, we were doing these lean hearings. We're now doing administrative citations and we're now doing a little bit more enhanced code enforcement. But again, in recent days, staff has been pulled in many different directions, but they are now working in conjunction with council to try to get a lot of these sites cleaned up faster.
Okay, thank you. I'd be very interested in hearing about current procedures in code enforcement. That would be an interesting presentation.
In fact, what I would like to do is at some point utilize our meetings for what I would call updates and maybe some talking points and workshops and this is something that'll come, but one of the things that I've been talking to staff about is putting together a work program to take to the Board of Supervisors for some long-range planning efforts that are in need now. So the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday adopted the Mendocino Town Plan. And with that said, we really need to start looking at some other long-range planning efforts now that this task is behind us. I mean, obviously, we still have to go to the Coastal Commission for the final certification, but a lot of the big hurdles are done now. But we really need to start looking at the coastal zone as far as an LCP update. If it's not a full LCP update, at least it's going to be partial. And that'll conclude my director's report.
Any other questions for staff before we move on? The next item is matters from the public. The Planning Commission welcomes participation in commission meetings. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the commission that are not on the posted agenda and items which have not already been considered by the commission. No action can be taken. Is there anyone who would care to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar of which there are no items and on to the regular calendar. Case U 2017-0002 is the canceled item. The next case is U 2017-0010.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I actually have a request from the applicant to postpone this hearing until the, or this case until November 16th, Planning Commission.
Okay, and we, I believe, need to do a motion to continue it. We have a, is that public comment on this item? Okay. We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to continue case U 2017-0010 to 1116. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next case is U 2016-0012, Toll House in Bell Valley Farm.
Good morning. I'm Julia Acker and I'll be presenting this item for Robert Dostilek, who was not able to be here today. So I've just picked up this item secondhand, so bear with me. I'm going to try to do my best to get through it. So in any case, good morning. The project before you today is a proposed major use permit to establish transient habitation, resort and recreational facilities at the existing Toll House Inn property. The project site is located approximately six miles east of Boonville on the north side of Highway 253 between Boonville and Yukaya with all the parcels associated with the project comprising approximately 197 acres. So you can see here's a location map showing where the property is located on 253. So let me go ahead here. So here we have a copy of the site plan here. So the proposed resort and recreational facility would involve expansion of the existing Toll House Inn from six to 11 units and the addition of 12 glamping units and eight tent camping sites. If you're not familiar with the term glamping, it is a newly defined term that means glamorous or high-end camping. Each glamping unit would be comprised of an approximately six-foot diameter, nine-and-a-half foot tall tent positioned on top of an approximately seven-foot diameter, one-and-a-half foot tall wooden platform. The major use permit would also authorize ancillary components of the project, including the expansion of farm labor housing from one to three units, construction of one owner's residence, one caretaker's residence, two bath houses and an assembly building. There will also be 10 private events and/or weddings per year with up to 100 guests per event and five private events and/or weddings per year with up to 150 guests per event. And the request also includes providing a temporary tent village with 20 camping spaces to support five private events total. So that is regardless of size though, in terms of the tent, additional tent camping for the 20 spaces. Additionally, an existing outbuilding, which is approximately 156 square feet, would be removed and an existing workshop located on the site would be converted to an additional assembly space. So this site is also located in some grazing and farmland areas. Oops, and let's see here if I have it good. So here we go. Take a look at that. For the purpose of the proposed two additional farm labor housing units, the project also involves expansion of the agricultural operations. So this will include approximately three to five acres of vegetable herb and flower production, five acres of mixed orchards, 15 to 20 acres of vineyards and approximately 100 acres of pasture for cattle grazing. Lastly, this project involves site preparation and grading to improve existing roads and add new roads and to provide additional parking areas for guests and there has been a grading plan submitted for the project. So let me see here what we have next. And he didn't include that. Okay, so in terms of general plan and zoning consistency, the existing development on the site includes the six-unit Toll House Inn, an existing single-family residence, a farm employee housing unit, a workshop, a storage yard and four glamping platforms. The 197-acre project site has a general plan classification of rangelands with a 160-acre minimum parcel size. The project site is also zoned, rangeland and resort and recreational facilities, which is a transient habitation use type, is a conditional use within that district, so subject to this major use permit before you today. So there are some sensitive resources located on this site. Biological surveys were prepared for the property in both the past spring and summer to identify any potential environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Vegetation at the site is generally comprised of a mosaic of native and non-native grasslands, oak woodland savanna and oak woodlands. Additionally, there's streams including Soda Creek and a tributary and associated water drainages that flow through the site. Special status native grasses and potential wetlands were identified during the biological surveys and conditions are recommended by staff to protect these identified resources in addition to geological and hydrological resources that may exist on the property. Fish and wildlife also performed a site visit at the property and provided their concurrence with the project and the recommended mitigation measures. With regards to CEQA compliance, as is discussed in the initial study and staff report, measures have been identified and incorporated as conditions to mitigate any potentially significant impacts to the environment to less than significant levels. Therefore, staff recommends a mitigated negative declaration be adopted for the project. And with the ability to make the findings outlined in the staff report and as conditioned, and I'd like to discuss some of the conditions as well, the use permit is recommended for approval from our office. So I believe what's been distributed to the commissioners is this letter from Wind Coastal Planning dated October 17th, 2017, which does have some recommendations for modifications and clarifications on the conditions of approval. Staff has had the opportunity to review this letter and is in agreement with many of the proposed changes. So I'd like to go through those with the commissioners unless you have any questions at this time.
Sounds good.
Okay. So starting with standard condition six, you'll see here the recommendation on page two of the comment letter from Wind Coastal Planning does include the addition of the language that would essentially say that the requirements set forth from CAL FIRE along with other agencies that are listed in that condition, just wanting to add a language that says, or any subsequent modification thereof, to their requirements. And also to note that the date listed for the CAL FIRE letter was incorrect. Wind Coastal Planning has provided as an exhibit to this letter, a copy of both a letter that was dated January 17th, 2017 from CAL FIRE expressing some of the requirements, as well as a preliminary clearance dated February 1st, 2017. So staff is in agreement with making those proposed modifications, which would allow the applicant to work with CAL FIRE to make sure that they're in agreement with any proposed modifications to those requirements. With regards to condition seven, staff is also in agreement with this condition as recommended by Wind Coastal Planning. This would essentially clarify that the discussion is about removal of sensitive vegetation on the property as opposed to just, you know, standard maintenance of a property for brush removal, invasive species management. So as you'll see, it's written here, it really clarifies that the vegetation that is to be limited for removal is the sensitive vegetation on the property. You'll also see there is a note here about adding allowance for management of invasive species on the property, which staff is in agreement with. And then it also notes that the biological scoping survey had prepared several figures, figures 11 through 14, which would just be consulted should there be any development proposed outside of the study areas that were presently included in the staff report and the attachments. So what this would basically state is that if they were to conduct any development outside of the study areas, then fish and wildlife as well as the county would be consulted to ensure that the proper, the resources are protected and proper measures are implemented. Okay, and condition 12, so this was the main one that is a little bit more meaty in terms of the proposed changes to it. So you'll see that on page three of the document from Wind Coastal Planning, they propose certain additions to this condition as well as deletion of certain aspects of it. Staff is in agreement with these proposal, this proposal, and I'll explain more why we are in agreement with this as well. So essentially how this would be revised would be to state that rather than doing one single revised site plan, there would be revised site plans submitted with each building permit application since this project is proposed to be phased. So that would at least provide, so the applicant does not have to have all aspects of the project definitive locations defined right away. They will be able to develop that over time and then during the building permit review process, staff would be able to ensure that those are in conformance with the recommendations and requirements of this permit. So you'll see here also that it describes about recognizing that the plants are conceptual in nature and therefore exact locations of the structures may vary with each building permit application. So therefore, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan to illustrate that the proposed development conforms to a minimum setback of 50 feet from identified potential wetlands. The condition also used to read, "and special status vegetation alliance areas." So staff, this was our main concern, was wanting to make sure that that was consistent with the biological survey and my review of the survey and as is noted in the commentary from Wind Coastal Planning, measure 1A simply states that the proposed relocated structures shall be located far enough away, that is the term used, from potential wetlands and special status vegetation alliances to prevent detrimental impacts during construction and ongoing use of the property. And then measure 1B is really where this 50-foot buffer area comes into play, where they're stating that should development occur within 50 feet of identified wetlands or special status native plants, that they would implement best management practices during construction for, in those areas. So staff is in agreement with making that change, but of course defer to the commission on that as well. You will also see that there is just the clarifying statement that any future development proposed outside of the study areas as shown in the report provided by Wind Coastal Planning would then require consultation with fish and wildlife in the county for concurrence. So moving on to page four of the letter from Wind Coastal Planning, staff has reviewed their proposed changes for condition 15, which would simply clarify that a storm water pollution prevention plan, or a SWIP, would only be required if the proposed grading for the project exceeds one acre. And that is consistent with the recommendations that were provided by the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board and we do have that on file. And I believe the reason that that was not stated was initially the estimates on the application were that the grading would exceed one acre, but the grading plan submitted shows that it'll actually just be just under one acre, but still that condition would apply should the grading exceed that acre threshold. With regards to condition 25, staff is also in agreement with the proposed change here, which would simply allow the applicant to work with both CAL FIRE and the Anderson Valley Fire Department for any proposed modifications to the conditions that they have set for this project. So that would really be to the satisfaction of those fire agencies and staff has no concern with those. With regards to condition 34, this is really to clarify that, you know, certain aspects of the project may not require commercial solid waste disposal service. So this would just add a clarifying statement at the beginning that would say depending on the phasing of the project, that prior to final inspection of the first building permit, they would have a commercial waste disposal service and would provide a copy of that contract to Planning and Building Services for review. And then finally, with condition number 39, this is to clarify about the temporary tent village. So as I stated in my initial presentation, the temporary tent village is limited to a maximum of 20 tents during the five annual private events. Originally, this said allowing up to 150 persons. Staff has reviewed the project file and determined that the applicant actually requested that it would be regardless of size, so meaning that the events that are held for 100 people or less would also potentially be able to utilize this temporary tent area, but it would still be limited to five. So, you know, whether you have five events of 100 or less or five events of 150 or less, regardless, they would be able to utilize this tent village and it would be limited to the five total for the year. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? I'd just like to make a comment. Excellent report.
Oh, thank you.
And especially to pick it up at the last minute. You did very, very well.
Well, thank you.
Uh, seeing no questions from the commission, we will be happy to hear from the applicant.
I'm John Rubenstein, the owner at the Toll House. And I just want to start by thanking Julia for picking this up and taking it on and also to thank Robert and Mary Lynn and the rest of the staff. They've been extremely helpful in assisting us throughout the process for the last really 11 months we've been in application phase, but we've been working on this, it feels like forever. And thank you to the commissioners for giving me the opportunity to just say a few words about our project. But before I talk about us, I do want to just take a moment and acknowledge the heartbreak that we're experiencing at the Toll House about the recent fires and how they've impacted our community. Members of our staff, one of whom is here today, lives in Redwood Valley and, you know, and other contractors we work with have been heavily impacted by this. And we've made the Toll House available for evacuees to stay at and have been looking for other ways that we can contribute. And just want to say we're, just feel really proud to be part of a community where people are stepping up and being incredibly generous and supporting each other. So it just felt right to say something about that this morning. So let me take a moment and just share with you the vision of what our project is really about. The maps are great, but they don't quite tell the whole story. So I've been a leadership coach for 25 years, working with nonprofit leaders, working mostly to support leaders that do social change and environmental change work. And in all that time, I've always had the dream of creating a small retreat center where organizations and leaders doing transformational work would have a place that's connected to nature, where they could do deep leadership retreats, team building and organizational strategy work. At the same time, as someone who cares deeply about the future of our land, water and natural resources, I've always envisioned that this retreat center would happen on land that was undergoing active restoration, dealing with issues of erosion control, mitigating surface water runoff, protecting sensitive habitats, cultivating native species and growing and providing food for the local economy. Those are things that I'm personally passionate about. And so that's why you heard that part of this project includes small-scale annual vegetable farming, perennial orchards, sustainable vineyards and the continuation of animal grazing that's been historic to that valley in Bell Valley behind the Toll House. So in a nutshell, our vision is that when people come to Bell Valley to do any kind of retreat, they'll see this kind of active restoration happening on the land and it will hopefully educate and remind them that no matter what kind of work you're doing, what kind of transformation you're doing, transformative work you're engaged in, we all need to take into account the impact we have as humans on the natural world that supports all of us. So it's really those two pieces of supporting this deeper retreat work and having this work be, being essentially a demonstration of what good land stewardship practices look like. That's been what's motivated me for the last 10 years to work on this. So we set out to work, in a nutshell, that's what we set out to work on when we began stewarding the land at Bell Valley nine years ago. And it's taken a lot of time in planning, including getting to know the land, planning for the stewardship activities and renovating and operating the historic Toll House as a bed and breakfast up until this point. But today, we're ready and on the threshold of taking this vision to the next level by making the land available for the retreat groups of the kind I just mentioned. And we're all so excited to be able to host a small number of weddings and private events. We view these events as being transformative in their own right and so they feel consistent with our mission. And yeah, that's really what it's about. And I just want to end by thanking some members of the community that have come out today in support of our project, John Chisano and Barbara Goodell. And then finally, just to recognize the two members of our staff. Could you two stand for a minute? Eric Fenster and Andrea Rios. They have worked tirelessly to help make this project possible and they're really the heart and soul of this and have kind of kept me going when I've, at moments when I've lost a little bit of my own faith about it. But we're incredibly excited to be here and we thank But we're incredibly excited to be here, and we thank you for considering this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that was the fun stuff. Amy Nguyen with Wind Coastal Planning for the dry stuff. And I'm really here just to answer questions because Robert Dostelak and Julia has gone through the staff report. Robert has been really fantastic throughout this whole process, and Eduardo just started off. Agency review with Fish and Wildlife and CAL FIRE, everybody has been really super. It's been, there've been a lot of little elements for this project, but the holistic, comprehensive review has been, has been super. So I actually don't have anything to present here. I'm here to answer questions, and we're supportive, entirely supportive of the staff report with the modifications that Julia has presented. So I can stand here, if you wish, to answer questions, or I can scoot on back to my seat.
Any questions for the applicant?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello.
It just, this really seems like a beautiful project. I was just hit by the attention to detail and also especially excited about the attention to the pollinators with the, with the beekeeping element, and also especially the oak restoration and the sort of new understanding of forestry with oak release and the role that thinning and douffers play in that. So, good job on all that.
I forgot. For the record, Amy Nguyen, Wind Coastal Planning. Sorry.
So that was a comment. And then my, my question, because as I'm looking through this, there's a lot of agriculture, and there's also some, looks like some fire hydrants that CAL FIRE is asking to put in. And the, the water source, are wells correct, two wells?
Yes.
Okay. And those have been deemed to be adequate?
Yes.
For all the water needs?
Yes.
Okay. That's it? Super.
Other questions from the applicant's report?
I guess I do, because I have some real concerns.
Okay.
The project itself seems, on the face of it, quite nice, of course, I think, but the fire danger in rangeland, of course, is on my mind as well as many. And without having anything from, current from the fire prevention agencies and firefighting agencies, I'm a little worried.
Oh.
I can't imagine evacuating 150 people plus staff down 253 in a, in a big fire.
Pardon for the misunderstanding. We do have concurrence with, with the fire agencies. We have two, two iterations of concurrence. We, there is, you, there is the first concurrence from February, and then we've been working with CAL FIRE since then to, with further modifications. We had concurrence at the end of September with some refinements with CAL FIRE, with Chief Schlefer, to further refine them. And the, the conditions of the staff report, the MND, and with CAL FIRE are, are quite involved. So we have a very thorough plan to put in place. Our request was simply to make sure that there's, that the staff report doesn't lock us in with a very specific moment in time, and that we can make sure that as things, as situations change, that, that we stay current with the fire agencies. So we actually are in the process of developing quite an in-depth fire management plan with the fire agencies, both CAL FIRE and Anderson Valley, to, that includes an evacuation plan, includes identifying all of the structures on the property, as well as all of the, the transient occupancy, occupancy people, which are otherwise known as guests. Sorry, it's the planner in me. And one of the benefits of this being a retreat use, as opposed to the use mostly being when people are out on the landscape, being individuals all the time. If it's a retreat, then you, you essentially have retreat captains. So they know, they know where all of their people are. So it's like a shepherd and their sheep, right? They know where everybody is. So part of that, part of that management plan, that, that, that emergency management plan, is that you have, you have essentially a captain on site that knows where all the sheep are, so that if something happens, whether it's a medical emergency or it's a fire emergency, you know who to go to, to draw everybody in. And we already have, we already know how people will come down from the various parts of the property, where those, where those people will be. And so it's, it's actually, as you can tell, we have, we're pretty far along in figuring out how to deal with, with, with medical or a fire emergency and the paths of travel. So.
We've been thinking about this, but please continue the question.
Well, one more thing, and you may not be the one to ask, but you're so knowledgeable, you probably can do it.
Okay.
And do you know what the difference, different requirements are for the assembly room fire prevention?
I do.
It's mentioned, I don't know what it's called.
I feel a comment coming up.
Yeah. I do not know the specific requirement, different requirements, but I do know that they are absolutely heightened when it comes to the building department. There, there's.
For public assembly, they would be much more heightened than for, for residential use. And I'm, I am not a building inspector, I should say, but at least my understanding is that they would be heightened for any time you have public assembly. It's treated differently than residential use types.
And that's 50 or over? Is that number of 50, what triggers?
For the assembly, I believe it's just the type of use type for the building itself. And so the assembly, it's an occupancy type, so when the building inspection, when they do their review of the building permit plans, they'll be reviewing it for consistency with that specific occupancy type.
I think there's two different agencies that have two different interpretations. I think fire agency has a quantity interpretation, and the building, building codes have a use interpretation. So for the building code, if you're using the structure for assembly, that, you know, whether it's five people or more, again, it doesn't matter, it automatically has a higher burden of protection. But for a fire, fire code, it's quantity. So, you know, we go by the, the lower bar. And so if there are two structures on the property that would be utilized, you know, ultimately, potentially, the immediate one would be the initial conversion down near the, the current inn at Toll, sorry, I'm not facing all of you, the inn, the inn. And that is currently a workshop and farm labor housing. That is the first structure probably that would be addressed. The workshop would be converted to, that would be converted by occupancy to assembly use, which would have the higher burden. And then the, the, the farm labor housing unit would be converted to in space. And so those would, those would have different burdens on them. And then further down the road, when budgeting and use permits, then a new structure would be built, is proposed to be built up on one of the knolls as an assembly space, and as a brand-new structure, that would have its burden.
And staff, I will just note as well that the comments received the letter from CAL FIRE dated January 17th, 2017, does discuss as item five, that there would be a medical fire and evacuation plan that needs to be prepared for the project in conjunction with the appropriate agencies, as well as there's a requirement for a hydrant system to be installed for this property. So, you know, and where we've modified the condition to state that any subsequent modification of these requirements. So that will require that the applicant work with CAL FIRE in light of our current situation as well. So CAL FIRE will be able to provide that additional commentary on it, if there's additional measures that are required.
Right. Like after the Oakland fires, things got more, more intense. So if things get more intense after this.
Exactly.
Exhibit three of our letter includes the September 28th commentary from CAL FIRE, where they had modif, start, you know, they had included modified language. And then John Rubenstein would like to add some language, if you don't, or add some commentary, if you don't mind.
Nothing technical. I just want to say that I personally met with Chief Schlefer on the property twice during this process, and then my road builder met with him a third time to go over all these modifications. So it's been a huge priority on our mind to make sure we are so fire-safe in the project. And the modificate, he was working on a letter that would be submitted as the modification for this when the fires started. And I haven't even wanted to consider calling him in the last two and a half weeks to ask him to get that letter. So as long as we have the opportunity to have that modification, we're not gonna, we, yeah, that's what we're planning to do. So it's been a big, it's been a big thing on our mind.
Well, it sounds like your, your, your plan will be, you know, tight, but no matter how well you plan, maybe you can protect enough of the property that people don't have to evacuate, but maybe you can't, when you look at what land surrounds it.
Right. And part of what our plan includes is evacuations and secondary, we have four secondary accesses, which Chief Schlefer said, "We usually don't have nearly as many opportunities as you're giving us." That's why he's recommending waiving the 22-foot requirement, because we have so many opportunities for evacuation in other routes, that he feels, you know, he's, well, he just said to me, "We don't, we never, we rarely get this kind of situation where we can create these opportunities." I don't know if I'm quoting him right, but I think we have a map that shows those, but I don't know.
Hold on.
The computer stalled.
It's not responding for a moment.
But for example, at the top of the, at the top of the ridge, we can have 50, we could have all 150 right next to a pond, which he said is, is one thing that's, is considered when they're thinking about where to get people if the, if the main access is shut off for fire. So it's been a pretty deep dialogue, which is all going to get reflected in this final modification that will be put forward.
And I noticed Chief Avila is in the room from Anderson Valley, so maybe we can hear from their perspective also, might be helpful.
There's, in the, in the staff report, and the pages aren't numbered, unfortunately, but in the staff report, there's an aerial imagery map that we're trying to get up, but that shows quite nicely the, the, the interconnectivity of the, the logging, or I guess there are not logging roads out here, but the Jeep roads, the Jeep road net, yes, that one. That's, that was part of the conversation with CAL FIRE about alternative access routes from, you know, out, out of the property to Highway 253 as well. So we've talked about how to get people to safe, safe spaces within the property, but also how to get out of the property, alternative routes. So we've definitely gone through emergency. Throughout the year, we've, we've highly considered first responder issues, even before the events of the last couple of weeks. So.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I had a question on one of the conditions. Would now be inappropriate time, or are we going to cover those later?
Well, insofar as they propose the modifications, I think now would be good.
It would be for the owner. It's, it's Condition number 42, where it's got prior to issuance of building permit for farm labor housing, the applicant's going to have to have an employment agreement in W-2 forms. I question, why does there have to be the hiring of people before the issuance of the building permit? Is that agreeable, or is it required by law? It seems to me that you would normally build the house, then you would hire the farm labor people.
It's actually a good point, and that, as you're saying it, I realize it crossed my mind, and I didn't ask Amy about it. We, we have a current farm, we have one current farm employee unit, and I'm familiar with the requirement, because we submit a W-2 every year when we renew that. It is a good question that if you're just starting to build a unit, it's unlikely you would have hired that person yet. So being able to provide the W-2, so I guess all I can say is I'd be in support of making some adjustment there, and it's just not one that we call.
Well, this says, this says prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Right.
And if we've got 300 homes that are burnt up, building permits are probably going to take a little time to issue. So your problem is expanded.
Right. Yeah, I, I get, I, I, I agree with you. It's, it, the basic point is, we're unlikely to have already hired the person without the place for them to live, and we won't have the place to live before we've applied for a permit, obviously, so.
So this, this could be changed to like, prior to having a final inspection?
Or pri, yeah.
Prior to occupancy?
I think they call it a certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy. Prior to the certificate of occupancy.
Or prior to actual occupancy. We, I guess the, there is an administrative permit that's required for a farm employee unit, so that's what we had to go through for our current farm employee. So maybe what it should be is, you can't receive that permit. That's separate from a building permit, until you've submitted a W-2 for who that individual is.
Would staff care to weigh in on this topic?
Yeah.
Sure. I was just discussing it with our.
That's over my pay grade.
I was just discussing it with our director as well, and we typically keep this condition how it presently is written, so that way we're able to maintain control, and I'll defer to Nash here.
Yes, if I may. Typically, that's the way it's always been done, is to be able to have that prior to issuance of the building permit. However, in consulting with county council, it is something that we could do prior to occupancy. But again, this has been a longstanding practice of doing it prior to issuance of the building permit, because it does allow for, for that ability to keep track and, and make sure that it's being done.
I don't quite see how, but.
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Kudrowski, so I have no background right now on whether it's a requirement of any kind of state or federal law for housing. I'm happy to look into that, and we could debate, we'll try and attempt to change it now, but if, if we, if it comes out that it's actually required to be done prior to issuance of a building permit, we'd have to come back and revisit this issue at some point, if we do change this language.
But as I've mentioned, we can go ahead and, and do prior to issuance of occupancy. I mean, I, in my opinion, either one would work.
It just seems very counterintuitive that you would have this person hired, and what, you'd take their batteries out and stand them up in a corner till the house is built? I mean, I, I just don't see it.
Can it, can it, excuse me, can it be prior to final inspection of the building permit? And then that would be just about at the same moment that the, it's, it's still the same, the same strength of the county inspector?
And then that's why I suggest we could do prior to final occupancy.
Right, right. Okay, is that the same?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, building permits aren't my world.
Okay, well, when we get to the motion, we can talk, but.
Last comment on that. Even if we make it certificate of occupancy, if there are more restrictive requirements that happen before that, technically, our condition's still in compliance with those. We'll just have to do that on an administrative basis. If something does mean you have to have that prior to, or even we say, we would abide by those standards.
Okay. Yes.
I'm just here for any, if you had any more questions.
Any other questions?
I guess one more on, on the Condition number 32. That was from Department of Transportation, and it was requiring a 22-foot road. Yet in CAL FIRE, they're talking about two 10-foot lanes or driveways at 10 feet. So our, and then you made a comment about the 22 feet somewhere in all this material. So where are we with the road width then? Is, is it going to be 22, 20?
Yeah. So the work that we didn't have time to do, I, I didn't really know how this worked, so I started with CAL FIRE. And I went into the conversation and reached that agreement. We now need to go back, I believe, and just see if Anderson Valley Fire Department and DOT are in agreement with CAL FIRE in their assessment. So all that is conditional. We can't do anything until we get that done, and I'm seeing that as our next step.
Then would 22 feet stay in Condition 32? Then would 22 feet stay in condition 32?
Uh--
Yeah. The-- Yeah, we're, we're not requesting to modify the condition. Um-- the condition, the condition, uh, will apply if necessary. It's just where, where does it apply? And so that's, that's why we've requested the modification in the other conditions, because the other conditions are very site-specific. This one just says, if you are, if you're building a road, it's going to be this width. And the other conditions, since they point to letters, those letters say, "We want the road in these locations to be this width." So--
Okay.
And we're fine with, we're fine with this because it lays out what those standards are, should they be applied.
Any further questions of the applicant? Did you have on the other?
Yes, I just, um, on page nine of the staff report, it mentions the two wells. It says, "One well test was performed in March of 2015 at 9.4 gallons per minute." And I may have overlooked it, but I don't know about the other well. Do you have information on that?
Do you have that in your memory, memory banks?
No, the-- what I have in my-- I know the, the wells-- I don't know the technicality of how this works. The wells actually tested one at 50 gallons a minute and one at 35 gallons a minute. The 9.4 has to do with the way that they measure, and I can't explain honestly how, when we've had-- and we were-- there was a reason why we were only required to have one measured, and I can't-- I think Robert was aware of that, but I can't recall why. Because I remember asking, "Do you need updated tests of both wells?" And I was told somewhere along the line, "No, we didn't need that."
And I had one other question, and I guess I'm going back to what Molly asked about fire protection. And I know this is probably a little bit in the future, but I don't, you know, I have footprints of the buildings and such, but were you considering like metal roofs or anything for fire protection or anything like that? And again, I know this is future, but just, since we're discussing fire protection--
The-- I would just say that the, the, your building department is really up to speed. The, the latest code changes since the time I've been on the land in terms of fire safety have-- I, I see it in terms of how they've increased the costs of building, but the, what's called the WUI code, the Wildland Urban Interface Code, we are required to meet that because of our location. So basically, our entire buildings have to be enveloped in a complete fire-safe structure. And then there's a bunch of other requirements that we've had to meet. So I don't know all the details, but I just know my contractors who've built our previous structures, each time we've come to the department, there's further requirements to meet the current, the latest fire safety structures. And we do build with metal roofs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
One, one other issue. On page nine, down at the very bottom, it's item number eight, use permit findings. It says condition, or contingent on granting of the rezone. Um--
Sure, there was a previous rezone-- oh, excuse me, sorry. This, this is on. So there was a previous rezone for the, the property, so I believe that is what it's referring to, is that there was a previous rezone to the rangeland designation. But if you'll just allow me a minute to look over the, the staff report here, since I'm not wholly familiar.
It's on page three under the related applicant--
Yeah, so it does look like there was a rezone in 1980 from planned development to FC, which would have been agricultural forest conservation. And then likely that we had converted that when we did a general plan update into rangeland as the zoning district. And I believe that, that's how I read this when I-- how I interpreted that when I read this as well. So I would say there is not a rezone associated with this application at this time, so that might just be poor wording within the, the staff report. So the clarification that there is no rezone currently in process with this application. Yeah.
If I-- Nash Gonzalez, if I may add, forest conservation or FC designation was the designation for the zoning that was used prior to the adoption of the current zoning code in 1981. So again, there, you know, just to reiterate, no rezone.
So we'll modify that. Any other further questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we will open the public hearing on this item, and our first speaker is John. I'm sorry, I cannot read your last name. Who is the Wine Growers Association person? You have lovely handwriting. You must be a doctor in your spare time.
That's very kind. Thank you very much. My name is John Chazano. I am the Executive Director of the Anderson Valley Wine Growers Association. Some of you are probably familiar. I represent 150 members, wineries, vineyards, and associate members, of which the Toll House is an associate member. I've had the opportunity, as I hope all of you have, to visit the Toll House property. Each time I have visited, it hasn't been short. It hasn't been that they were trying to educate me about this project, simply about their property, because it's uniquely special. Anderson Valley doesn't have a Holiday Inn, we're happy with that. Anderson Valley is small, individually owned, uh, private businesses. There's a, a uniquely independent feel about it. But there's also this incredible collaboration, this cooperative working together. And the folks at the Toll House, John Andrea especially, took me every time I visited the entire property, a five-minute visit stretching to an hour and a half. And education, education, education. The ecological-mindedness, the environmental concerns, the opportunity to create a space for people to come together in nature, self-supportive as much as possible, and have these transformative experiences, not merely a meeting space, but a magical meeting space. And as part of the Anderson Valley Wine Growers Association Cooperative of Businesses, another group of folks that we can rely on to work and make all of Anderson Valley better, all of Mendocino County better. We have Camp Navarro. We have Toll House. We have the fairgrounds. And beyond that, we don't have a lot to hold events and bring people together in a large way. I had a great question, or heard a great question from Molly, and that was with regards to, what do you do if you have 150 people that need to leave all at once? It happens at our events. When we have 1,000 people come to Taste Pinot Noir, they're leaving when it's over, and they're also arriving roughly all at the same time. I'm happy to have seen sold-out events during my tenure. We do bring people in, and they do leave, and it's roughly arriving and leaving at the same time. So it's semi-tested. Admittedly not fire pushing them along, but the need to get back to their hotel and get a good night's sleep somewhere in Ukiah or Cloverdale or the coast, since we don't have those Holiday Inns. For us, the Toll House does also present an opportunity for some increased lodging in the area when we do have events. They're terrific partners. They're incredibly passionate. If you haven't visited, trust me, I have, and I'm amazed. And I, I recommend your approval of their project. Thank you very much. Oh, any questions? Okay, thank you all.
Andrea Rios, please.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Rios. I'm Guest Services Manager at the Toll House, and I've been there for just a little bit over two years, and I'm very happy to be here today. As Guest Services Manager, and also having been in the Anderson Valley and Ukiah area now for 13 years, I have seen and very closely observed the need for additional lodging in, especially in the Anderson Valley. And watching the development of this particular location, as you've now had a sense, and I think you'll hear a little bit more from others that are coming this morning to speak to you specifically about this, the care with which this property is stewarded. It-- I've worked in a variety of different small businesses in Anderson Valley and in Ukiah, ranging from hospitality, marketing, to resource management. And the hands-on and care that have been provided by the owner and the staff, of which I'm one, and we have a few others, who are all very, very passionately involved in this project and are all very hopeful that we will be able to move forward. I work very intimately with our guests and in providing an experience for them, but one of the things that stands out for me is with our, with our approach, the type of guests that we receive. They reflect, and they truly are committed to wanting to nourish and encourage this type of experience in our, in our Mendocino County. I can't tell you how fortunate I feel to work with the guests that we have staying. They, they truly appreciate all of the nuances and care and details, and just the, the sheer beauty of not only the land, but also the, the house itself, the restoration, all of those details. And that's reflected out when, what we're hoping to build here for the future. And use it as an educational location in, in many, in many ways, as John mentioned, for transformational retreats, also for small-scale events. But again, very, very hands-on type of project. So I know also that our staff that could not be here today are very excited and hopeful. As many of you are aware, employment in this county is limited. Having done a lot of income patching myself, I'm very excited and hopeful that we will be able to have more employment opportunities at the Toll House. And essentially, it's been a, a real joy to work with John, and I speak for, I believe, Eric, myself, and myself, that we are hoping to create, as John mentioned, just a, an experience that people will take home with them and leave Mendocino, and encourage others to return to our very special place. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Barbara Goodell?
Barbara Goodell, and I speak as a community member of Anderson Valley, and I've lived in Boonville for almost 40 years. And before I start, I just want to say that Linda McElwee came to speak in front of the-- excuse me-- for the project and had to get back to work and could not, but she turned in a sheet. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about John and the Toll House's track record in terms of helping nonprofits in Anderson Valley. And I personally have attended strategic planning sessions. I've gone to interpretive hikes, to fundraisers, and to donor thank yous for nonprofit organizations. And the Toll House is very graciously welcome to all of us, and I think this project would be a great addition to the community, and I know that John will take good care of the property. Thank you.
And our last comment is Chief Avila.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just, I have two concerns. In, in preface, though, I would say that Anderson Valley Fire Department has no opposition to this, this plan that's being proposed. Two concerns that I wanted to bring up was, we commonly reference CAL FIRE, the Fire Department, as, you know, having jurisdiction, wildfires. From my perspective, we deal with events, locations, residential or commercial, all year long. So we need, when it comes down to roads, I'm thinking winter roads, ambulances, fire trucks for structured fires, medical aids, all those kind of things. So far, we haven't been involved in this process. We've had a limited amount of discussion, I think, on the phone, and in my letter that came out. So I just want to make sure Anderson Valley is involved in the process, from our perspective, not just a wildfire perspective. I always like to talk about CAL FIRE being Public Resource Code. There, I believe they're Title 15, 14. We, we follow Title 19 and 24. We're Office State Fire Marshal. So we have a different microscope on these, these facilities, and I want to make sure that we have public safety involved in, in these, these facilities being built. Again, we have no opposition, just want to make sure that we're involved in the process as it goes forward. The second deal is, the CSD was discussing last night at our Board of Directors meeting, the impact the large events facilities like this have on our valley. We know Camp Navarro, Toll House would be another. They start to add up to-- well, they have transient folks coming in for good purposes. Hopefully, we don't go to them, and hopefully everything goes well there. But we do start to see more calls with those things, and there's discussions about how many of these facilities do start to add up and make an impact on the Fire Department. And so we just want to let, you know, let you guys know that, that we're discussing as these facilities increase in our, in our district, that the Fire Department essentially is using taxpayers' money to, to support these transients coming to these large facilities. So again, we don't have any opposition to this. We just want to make sure we're involved in it, and that we have our say to make sure that we can serve the public when the medical aid, when the structured fire, when the wildfire happens. And that we just want to make sure that we're a part of this, this process.
I have a question for you then. Are you comfortable with our process in terms of consulting with you on these projects? Or would--
You know, it's interesting--
I mean, I think we're all starting to think maybe we need a little more process.
We, you know, we had an interesting, um, meeting the other day, several fire chiefs in the, the Planning Department, and we were discussing the fact that CAL FIRE is commonly referenced as, you know, the Fire Department that people go get their sign off for. Some departments within Mendocino County have the capacity to do plan checks and do the actual site inspections. Some don't. Everyone's a little bit different. There are several fire departments that absolutely want to be a part of it, and that's Anderson Valley is one of those. I would say anything that runs through the Anderson Valley District, yes. We need to have, make sure that we are absolutely involved in making sure that we have-- we apply public safety code to these facilities. Yes.
Thank you.
And again, there is no opposition at this point. I just want to make sure that we're working with these crews to make it safe.
So may I ask then, in your opinion, evacuation of 150-plus people on 253 is not problematic?
Oh, I would never say that.
No.
I think last week's events demonstrated some very unusual behavior that could clearly demonstrate anything is problematic when it comes down to the Wildland Urban Interface. You need to find a place that, you need to develop your place so that you have the best chance of surviving if you shelter in place. Then you have your exit and egress routes to get you out as directed as needed. So you have choices. You have, you're going to, when you're working through a dynamic situation, you have, you can either stay in place or go. I often talk to people about, do you want to change what you know for what you don't know? What I mean is, do you want to stay at this place that you've prepped? Or do you want to go out into the traffic jam? Do you want to go out into that street that may have trees on it? Do you want to go out where that fire is going? You don't know what you're gonna run into. A lot of people get caught up on those roads. Having a survivable location is the best option. From there, can making egress routes, like they have four, they mentioned, those are adding to the toolbox as far as the plan to get out, but the best thing is having your place prepped to stay and shelter in place until you're directed to get out.
Thank you very much.
Staff, if I may comment on this, I do just want to call your attention to condition 24 and condition 25 in the project, which does include that the emergency plan that the applicant will be developing will be submitted for review and acceptance by Anderson Valley Fire District, as well as condition 25 requires review and sign off from their department on any revised submitted plans as well.
Are local fire districts part of our referral agency system?
They are. They did--
Okay, that's good.
And I, I just consulted our green sheet, and it does look like Anderson Valley was, was noticed. Just often, you know, as the chief said, there's often districts that are not able to respond just due to resources.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
So then this is a clarifying question for staff. It's looking like, and tell me if this is correct, that there are two points where a local fire department could weigh in. One would be in the initial referral, and then as evidenced by the conditions on here, it would also be later in the process?
Certainly, and at any point, a fire district or, or any member of the, the public, any agency, may be able to provide comments to our office, and certainly with-- And certainly with a project such as this, the fire protection concerns are very important to our department. So we do require submittal of a CAL FIRE preliminary clearance with your application. And then we do perform the consultation with the local fire district through our referral process. And many districts, as I've stated, choose not to respond to these referrals. They may just not have the resources or the time to be able to respond within the timeframe specified.
If I may, through the chair. On projects, on many different projects, one of the things that staff has been doing for quite some time is advising applicants to begin early consultation with their fire districts so that they get an idea of the types of conditions and the types of requirements that will be forthcoming so that there's no surprises. And I know we've done that in the past with CAL FIRE. We've done that with a lot of the fire districts, as we've said. Especially even here with Ukiah Valley Fire, as we say, consult with that district early on as part of early consultation. Not everybody heeds that warning. They usually submit the project. And oftentimes, they find that during the referral process, we may not get conditions, we may not get comments, but comments do come in at the tail end. But this is why I strongly recommend that any project proponent go to the local fire district, as well as any other district or any other agency, and get that early consultation. And in light of everything that's going on right now, it's not a bad idea to start talking to your fire district before you do a subdivision or before you do a use permit or any type of project. Thank you.
May I clarify that we actually did reach out to Anderson Valley Fire and to have that phone call early in the process. I do absolutely support Chief Avila's comments that deeper conversation is good. We did focus on CAL FIRE's commentary and run with that. And we do look forward to, we do absolutely note that the conditions of approval require both the Anderson Valley and CAL FIRE concurrence before we can move forward. But I think that-
And updates with changing regulations as they evolve.
Yes, absolutely. But throughout the process, I think that the, you know, ongoing and early continuing consultation early would be good, rather than just the one that we had. So I agree with that. But we did do on our own, reach out. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I did have one. Were there any other more letters of support that we did not get?
I don't know about letters. There was one commenter, Linda McElwee, who I think somebody mentioned had to return to work, and she didn't speak, but I will just include her form in the, you know, count of them. Are there other letters? No.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So back to, we'll close the public hearing at this point and bring it back to the commission. Pardon? Could, I think we'll take a five-minute or 10-minute break here at this point and then come back. Bean? Is staff ready? Hello? Okay, we have closed the public hearing, and this matter is before the commission now. Are there any further comments or questions from commissioners? All right, then I reckon we're ready for a motion.
Motion is basically the recommended motion in the staff report by resolution without the mitigated negative declaration of grant use permit permit U 2016-0012 for the project as proposed by the applicant. Based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval, I might add that there was some language changed in Condition Number 42 prior to occupancy, I think was the language that was inserted.
Through the chair, if I may, I can read off a couple of the changes that were recommended by staff.
Yeah, would you summarize them, that would be good.
So Deputy County Counsel Matthew Godrowski, we have our usual resolution resolved clause that the Planning Commission hereby grants the major use permit subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A attached here too. And my recommendation would be to tag on to that subject to the following modifications. And in the final version, they'll be listed out. Condition numbers 6, 7, 12, 15, 25, and 34 will be revised to read as recommended in the letter from Wind Coastal Planning and as reviewed by staff during the meeting. And in addition, that Condition Number 32 will be revised so that the requirement is applicable prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
I believe that's 42.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
And Number 39, and as per Wind Coastal Planning, 42 as per recommended by the commission.
What says the maker of the motion? Okay, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second. All right, Purnell?
Aye, yes.
Paul? Kruger?
Yes.
Ogul?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Holt Camp?
Yes. Congratulations.
Six, zero.
Okay, we are ready for Case MS 2007-0023. This is the trustees of Penoleville, and I understand there's a request to continue this as well.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is an item that's also been continued. Do we have a date of continuance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, I was told we wanted a motion to continue till 11/16.
That's fine.
Sorry, Deputy County Counsel, in consultation with Mr. Neary, the attorney as part of this, he requested the continuance to November 16th.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of continuing this matter to 11/16, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And we are ready for Case MS 2016-008. Applicant, Green Wallace.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Ash Gonzalez, on behalf of Mr. Mattick, and I will go ahead and present this case. This is a minor subdivision of a 4.98 acre parcel to be divided into three parcels of .31, .37, and .78 acres, as well as a remainder of 3.52 acres. Also is requested an exception to the Mendocino County Code Section 1748.5I, which reduces the private access easement width from the required 40 feet down to 25 feet. The property is located approximately three miles north of Ukiah line on the northeast side of, east side Calpella Road, approximately .4 miles north of its intersection with Lake Mendocino Drive and east side Calpella Road. As I mentioned, the request is also for a reduction in the required private road width. Staff has referred the project out and received some comments. Again, most of the comments came at the Minor Subdivision Committee. The project was reviewed for consistency with the zoning and general plan, and the project is consistent with the general plan designation of suburban residential, as well as the zoning. And the property is not served by sewer district, but is served by Millview Water. The subdivision will likely result in an increased density of one additional single-family residence per proposed lot, as well as an increase of potential second residential units as well. Let's see, pursuant, again, to the Division of Land Regulations, again, there is the request for the private access easement to be reduced from 40 feet to 25 feet. Department of Transportation staff is here. Should the Planning Commission have any questions? As far as recommending, well, a mitigated, a negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project and found consistent with SEQA. By resolution, the recommendation is to adopt the negative declaration and grant the subdivision project as proposed by the applicant based on the facts and findings, subject to the conditions of approval. And we have a copy of the tentative map up on the board. But as I move through the conditions of approval, there is one change I would like to note on Page Nine of the staff report, which is the Conditions of Approval Number 12. There's a typo in there. It should read, "Verification shall be submitted in writing to the Department of Planning and Building Services", not as it stated, "The Department of Public Building". So there's a typo correction there.
Wait, what page?
Page nine of the conditions, Exhibit A of the resolution.
That was planning and building, Ash?
It should be, it should read Department of Planning and Building instead of Public Building Services. That's the correction to the conditions of approval. And again, as I've noted, the tentative map is up on the wall here. And it's a pretty straightforward minor subdivision. And staff will support the easement width reduction. And with that, that concludes my staff report. And Julia Ackery is here because she was on the Minor Subdivision Committee and can answer any specific questions that came up as to how the conditions were formulated and so on. Should the commission have any additional questions? Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. There wasn't much of a discussion about the basis for reducing the easement widths?
Sure, that is typically, it's a request from the applicant. They can basically request an exception from any of the Division of Land standards. We noticed that with the application. And only if we receive some sort of indication that that's not going to be acceptable. And in this case, it would really be with our Department of Transportation that we'd be looking for their commentary on this. And I believe that they do not have concerns associated with that reduction.
Would you like to hear from the Department of Transportation person?
Well, yeah, maybe so. Because if there is the chance for second units, I'm just wondering if the 25 feet would be a problem.
Good morning, Amber Munoz, Department of Transportation. You know, 40 feet is definitely our normally required easement width. In this case, I believe that the small amount of space they had there for the easement to come in did not allow for 40 feet. I wasn't actually the person who processed this, but that's my understanding of it. And we do not have a problem with that exception. We don't find that there are any detriment to health or safety because of it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Before you leave, I had a hard time looking at this map. As a matter of fact, I got on a microscope, or a micro, what do you call those things? To look at it. And if I'm not mistaken, on the map, it shows the width of that being 22 feet. I know everything addresses 22.
You have a better magnifier than I do.
Magnifying glass, that's what it's called, magnifying glass.
I do actually have a large version of the map, so I can look at it. And it looks like that's in fact what it is. It's a 25-foot easement with a 22-foot road.
Okay, so is that the plan, is 22 foot with a 25-foot easement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, does planning have something in place so that if there's a request for a second unit and the 22 feet doesn't seem adequate for adding extra units, that it would be disallowed?
If I may, through the chair, typically, this is part of the overall review process right now with the subdivision, is we try to anticipate the maximum density that will happen. And that's why when these cases are reviewed at the Minor Subdivision Committee, Department of Transportation weighs in on this. And if they do see an issue, this is where it would have been flagged. And in this case, as DOT has indicated, it has not become an issue. And I think a lot of it has to deal with topography, turnarounds, and so on. And I'm going to assume that that's what was looked at, and that's why it didn't raise an issue. So again, we look at the density and then the potential for additional second units to be placed on the property.
And if I may add, we often allow a 22-foot road for up to four parcels. So in this case, it's the 22-foot road is only accessing two parcels. So it would be about the same amount of use if you were to have second units on the properties.
Okay, thanks, I just needed the rationale.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess this is the time to bring it up. I did go to this site, and I need a clarification. I'm not sure if this is through staff or through the applicant. If I'm not mistaken, well, first of all, I have a little bit of concern on parcel, on the remaining parcel, why there is that little strip left and why that is not included in the remaining parcel. So there would be parcel 1, 2, 3, and then that one that has the AP number on it, I guess is the remainder parcel. I guess my question number one is, I'm going to assume that parcel number is for the whole project? Or are there other AP numbers that I was unable to read on the map?
Can you read out the parcel number you're looking at? I don't think anything here with the parcel number is-
Are you kidding me? I don't have my, 16821-something-006.
006 is not a part of this subdivision. That's a pre-existing parcel.
Okay, can you tell me where the remaining parcel? It says three parcels plus the remainder parcel. This would be the remainder here, right? Okay, then, I guess I'm a little confused. Three parcels plus the remaining parcel, but I only see three parcels in total.
If I may, through the chair, I'd like to ask the applicant to run you through this proposal.
Okay, thank you. I may have jumped the gun there, sorry.
Hi, I'm Sam Pope. I'm the civil engineer and land surveyor on this. It's kind of a strange parcel. That little piece in the middle is a separate piece. It's owned by somebody else. So there's a big piece on the right side, and then there's a little piece on the left. Those two on the left are accessed directly off of the main road, and so they're not part of the other use. So there's only one assessor's parcel for the whole project. The reason why the road was, when we did the survey, we found out that they didn't actually have access to the lot because the adjacent property to the south, it has to cross through the road right away to get there. So we were able to get an easement from the neighbor to get access through there, but that was the width of it that was provided. So it allows for a 22-foot road with a 25-foot easement.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
That's a different issue. What was your main question?
Well, I guess when this was created, that little flag area north of the parcel that's not a part of the subdivision, apparently, why, do you know why that was capped? I mean, okay, going north of the, it actually has an address of 3791.
That's a different property.
It is, I understand that. But going up to the north of that parcel, you've got the big parcel and then the little flag area there. Do you know why that's there on the north side of the other parcel?
That one there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because from the existing parcel, there was a space above it, for whatever reason. That was just the way it was divided years ago.
Many years ago, okay, okay.
Back before they had to go through the subdivision process.
Okay.
It's 24.8 feet. It's just a weird little chunk above it. And so we left that as parcel, just to be part of parcel two.
Right, okay, so clarify, I'm sorry, I'm just not following this. It says three parcels plus remainder parcel. So where are the three?
So parcel one is the very left, that's parcel two, and then- So parcel one is the very left, that's parcel two, and then parcel three is the little box below the turnaround, and then the remainder is all to the right.
Okay. So the third parcel is actually where I guess there's a residence. I know there's a barn there, I was out at the site and took a look at it. So it's mainly where the access road comes through to the remaining parcel?
Right. And that's what the easement's for, so the people can get to the remainder parcel.
Okay.
But that's only one person's going to access that. That's why we were able to get the reduced width.
Okay.
It's still a 22-foot road. I mean, it's a big road.
Right, with the 25-foot easement. Sorry, the aerial here might help too, to clarify a little bit about how that sort of little leg comes around that other parcel.
So this is the parcel that's outside of the- that 006 parcel, but this is one and two, three, and the remainder out here.
And so I can show you here. So one, two, three, and then here is our remainder.
Okay. Thank you. Does it say parcel three on there? Am I not seeing it? Yes, it does. Sorry.
Do they even have a font smaller than this?
Yeah. I hope- these are unreadable.
I have a really large- I don't know if you want to look at this one.
I think I have it with my little measuring- or what do you call it?
Magnifying.
Magnifying glass, I think I got it figured out. But I apologize, I did not see that parcel number three there and I didn't realize that that squared off area was a parcel number three. So thank you for clarifying that, Sam.
Sam Pope.
Anything else you would like to say about the project?
No, I'm good.
Any questions for the applicant's representative?
I might have more.
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
I think, Marilyn, did you have another question for Mr. Pope?
Um, no, I don't think so. It's a staff question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So this is a general question, applies to this project, but not specific to this project. I can't help but notice this is right below the dam. And can you just share with us what kind of considerations there are for housing immediately below a dam?
If I may through the chair, there you're going to have a lot of parcels that are below the dam that are covered under the dam inundation zone maps. And basically, it's- it's- you can't prohibit development in the valley. You can't develop- you can't prohibit development below the dam because it's zoned appropriately. But the dam inundation zone maps are out there, they're published, so that people should be made aware that should the dam fail, properties can be subject to inundation. But that's about it. I mean, it's a planning tool that we use. When we do a referral, we check the appropriate box and we send that off to responsible agencies. But again, it's- that's what it is. It's a tool. I think in a worst-case scenario, if that dam were to go, you would probably be up to your knees in water on State Street at the courthouse and a lot of other things. But these are things we hope would never happen, but at least at this point, the information is there for disclosure purposes. In fact, the subdivision that was built below the dam a number of years ago, though I believe it was a 200-lot subdivision, again, there's disclosures, they had to do a public report and so on. If these folks were doing a major subdivision of five acres- of five parcels or more, they would be required to do a public report and file it with the Department of Real Estate, which again, would further put lots of information out there to potential home buyers. But again, it's- it really kicks in when it's a major subdivision.
And is it noted on the parcel maps as they're recorded that this is, you know, see the inundation zone map also?
Typically not on the four parcel subdivisions. It's usually done on the major subdivisions.
I might comment also, this is actually up on a hill above- I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think it probably would flood North State Street before it would flood up on what's known as Oki Flats.
Right.
Yeah, this is way up on the hill.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I could say that that's a very good concern. It's so scary to look at all those parcels underneath that dam. But a number of times, we've reviewed that here at the commission when we redid the general plan. I think we talked about it. People came to put into the public record the protocol for notice to the people if the dam is failing and how long they would have. There's some system, I don't remember who operates that, but various agencies, it's kind of like protecting for fire, they kind of assured us that there would be warning should anything happen. And you just have to have faith.
If I may through the chair, what Commissioner Warner's referring to is the ISO rating that insurance companies do. And they typically look at things like dam inundation areas, they take a look at fire hydrant locations and so on, and they rate the areas for insurance purposes. And I think what you're bringing up is what was brought up last February with the breach in the dam at Oroville, is which is on a lot of people's concerns, a lot of people's minds. It is an earth dam, just like Oroville is. But again, the- we do have a hazard mitigation plan that the county put together back, I want to say in 2007, that addresses these issues. But again, when we look at major subdivisions, it becomes more of a concern for public awareness than it is for the minors.
Any other questions? Okay, we can- did I do the public hearing? I can't remember. Okay, so we will open the public hearing and hear from any members of the public who would care to comment on this item. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I guess the applicant's spoken.
Yes.
Does the applicant have anything more to add? Or? No other comments? Okay, a couple of things here. And the recommendation for the approval, I needed to clarify that. This is on page three of key issues. It says as proposed by the applicant, but I think that's supposed to be staff or planning and building. How did you want to word that? Or am I reading that wrong? Could very well be I'm reading it wrong. Maybe it is not-
In that last sentence.
Yes, under recommendation.
If I may through the chair, Nash Gonzalez, because you're taking a proposal as submitted by the applicant, that's why it reads that way. So I would recommend in your motion, and counsel can go ahead and clarify this, but you would be making the motion to adopt the resolution and adopt the negative declaration with the change to condition number 12, as noted by staff.
I believe also 15, changing the road width from 40 to 25.
That would be as well as the findings and conditions, which is the adoption of the- accepting the exception to Mendocino County Code Section 1748-5I.
Which is in number five in the resolution.
Okay, so that's not part- that wouldn't-
That's already part of your- part of the resolution and part of the motion.
Okay.
The only thing that's changing here is condition number 12.
Okay. And by resolution, adopt a negative declaration and grant the subdivision for the project as proposed, based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval and with the change on condition number 12.
Is there a second? I'll second.
All right, Warner?
Yes.
Ogil?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Purnell?
Yes.
Holt Camp?
Yes.
Six zero.
That concludes that item. Are there any matters from staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any matters from commission?
I do have one.
Yes.
And this is regarding one of the items that was postponed. It's for the Long Valley Health Center Skate Park. So forgive me if I'm going into territory, I shouldn't, but I think that this is- there was an error on page three. And it may have been as submitted by Sonoma State University, but on page three at the top, it says that the proposed project area is located in Ukiah Valley, near the confluence of the Two Forks of the Russian. That is not the case. So I don't know if that figures in in any substantial way in terms of any of the conditions as it relates to possible arc sites, but I did want to raise that now.
Thank you. We'll look into that clarification before we bring the item back.
Thank you.
Any other matters from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we have the approval of the April 20th, 2017 minutes. Any comments or corrections?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
Very minor, very minor.
Probably the ones I chose that I just didn't even bother with.
On page two, under the comments from Mr. Gonzalez, in the fourth line, it says change did not go through a local coastal program process and were not certified. I think if we add an S to change, so it's changes, it would read better. And in that same paragraph toward the end, there's an extra comma after the word "that", it's the second sentence up, concluded that, staff recommended. And the comma just breaks it up and should probably be eliminated.
I'm sorry, where was that, Molly? In the same paragraph?
In the same paragraph at the- toward the bottom, the second sentence up on the right-hand side.
Second full line.
And concluded that, comma, staff. And if we take the comma out, it reads a little clearer.
Oh, okay, that. Yeah, oh yeah, that's the one I picked up too. I just didn't mark it. Okay, thank you.
And then the only other one is that at the very end, with a vote, roll call vote recorded, instead of Nelson Warner as one name, it'd probably be nice to have a comma between the two.
More attached to Molly, huh?
But it was nicely done.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
I would move to approve the minutes as amended, corrected.
And all in favor of approving the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And are there any extensions? Looks like not. Uh, and so I-
Can we confirm our meeting schedule?
We could confirm our meeting schedule. I'm assuming, are we first and third Thursdays in November?
At this point, Victoria, I'm going to defer to you for the meeting, because we know that we're still on for the 16th. What about the first one in November?
November 2nd will be canceled, November 16th will be continuing on.
Do we know about December yet? Are we looking too far in the future on that one?
Last time I checked, both meetings will be occurring.
Okay.
But they can change when we get a little closer.
Okay. Thank you.
If- before we dismiss them, I do have a question, if this is our last meeting before December, that I will be here, because I'm missing the second one in November. I had an interest in the conference, the Sonoma State Conference on December, I think it was second or third. Will we still get a paid-for ticket to go?
I'm assuming that that information has already been provided to all the commissioners and we would need to know sooner rather than later who is interested in going to the SSU Conference, because it is the first, I want to say it's like the first Saturday in December.
Yes, it's early this year.
So I would say if you are, for those of you that are interested, if you can go ahead and get that information to us as soon as possible. And I would recommend it would be-
I believe that email came from Adrian.
It did. So I'll just reply to that.
It would be to coordinate with Adrian. And then she will coordinate with Danielle in our office to get that taken care of, so that it's paid for ahead of time.
Right.
So the sooner the better.
Okay. So I can ask, apparently, Molly, you're interested in going? Any other commissioners?
I have been thinking about going, just- but I haven't replied yet, because I've been running around too much.
Right. Again, I would recommend sooner rather than later, because of everything that's happening right now, we want to go ahead and get these things processed as soon as possible. Because there's certain dates that we can go ahead and submit things to the auditor and I would just like to get that taken care of sooner.
Is there an issue if, say, four of us decide to go because of the-
We just can't all ride together then.
Yeah, I think if you're going to do this, do separate- go separately. And I'll let counsel address that.
At a minimum, I think there are rules about how we can attend. I'll probably reach out to Adrian and if there are a majority of the Planning Commission trying to go, we might send out some kind of guidance.
So maybe three or less is okay in a car, but four or more, no?
Certainly not four, for sure.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
We want to carry the second.
Sure, a second.
All opposed, deck. Okay.